Welcome, Matthew Lister from GALL here, who's visiting us today. And I know that we have a bunch of people from City Place back here. Good to see you all.
For the record, it's Wen Deng, city traffic engineer. We're going to talk about Rosemary Avenue today. But before that, I kind of want to prep us on how this project evolved. We've been working on the mobility study now for over a year. And out of the mobility study, we went through a very detailed visioning process. And what do we want our city to be? Essentially, we established goals. We want a welcome in city. We want a resilient city. We want a walkable community and a safety community. And through this visioning process, you know, we prioritize our modes. What are our most vulnerable modes of transportation that we're talking about? And these are people who are walking and biking. And essentially, as an outcome of that study that we will be back at the end of this month to present to you is how do we redesign our streets so that it is safe for everybody? And especially streets like Rosemary that has a very large pedestrian presence. And Matthew Lister here is going to present on some of the more details of the design. But ultimately, this is one of many projects, a total of 45 projects. That's an outcome of our mobility study. So without further ado, Matthew.
And this is really a connection between the work that GALL has done for us, identifying five priority, five or seven, I can't remember, priority projects. And the first, the priority project we chose was Dancing Into The Sunset. And then this is then just tied into the work that we're doing on our mobility study as well.
That's correct.
Thank you very much, Wen, and thank you all. I actually, I'm going to take one second and swap out my presentation for a shorter version of this presentation. And those of you that know me know that, well, you'll be relieved, I think, to hear that that's the case. So, let's see here. Okay, that wasn't too bad, was it? How much time do I have, Mer?
Yeah.
Five to 10 minutes. All right, so strap in, everybody.
Not any more than a half an hour.
Okay, don't give me a half an hour. Well, thank you very much again for being here. We're really excited to present our progress on City Place and the work we've been doing with the city and also with related companies. But I wanted to just take a minute and sort of provide a little bit of context for the projects. You know, the year 2000, City Place opens, and it is really, I think, considered by many people to be a very innovative and new way of thinking about including the public realm into a project like this. And so, as the city of West Palm Beach is an innovator, this is an example, I think, of how it innovated in the year 2000 and how we can start thinking about moving forward. It really is sort of a best-in-class, at the time, case study for mixed-use urban development. But really, it's a best-in-class case study of prioritizing people and the experience of people in the public realm, right? And I think when we look at the data about how people live and use West Palm Beach, this place generally tops the list as one of the more favorite places, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The city has changed tremendously since then, though, right? The interesting, significant amounts of development and interest in downtown and the revitalization of downtown over the last about 20 years have been pretty intense and exciting, right? You're a city that actually has a functioning, new, high-speed rail system, right, that connects the region. Nobody else has that in the country, right? There's a lot of new market for mixed-use development, and then a lot of cultural amenities that are being added to and invested in the city, in and around City Place. And so, it's time, I think, for a rethink of City Place and what is the sort of 2.0 version now of City Place. The opportunities are really amazing for transformation. The other thing that's happened since City Place first went in is that people also have changed, right? And people's relationship to retail and the public realm has changed quite a bit. You know, we see that people, millennials, for example, are prioritizing experiences over transaction. They would rather have a really great experience and spend some money on that than to just buy stuff. And that's actually changing the way that retailers are thinking about engaging with the world. You know, they're looking for places to discover and shape and share experiences with one another. And this idea that culture is an anchor, and when I talk about culture being an anchor, I don't mean like plopping down an art museum, right? But that the experiences that we all collect with one another and the venues that can provide those experiences are actually the thing that creates that anchor, that cultural anchor. So because of that, we see retail and public spaces merging, right? There's parklets that are happening all over the world, right, and including West Palm Beach. Retail is popping up in public spaces. Experimentation within the public realm to create better spaces and places for people to gather with one another is really important and key. Innovative cities like West Palm Beach are doing this. And so, when we start to think about reimagining City Place, it's important to understand that sort of broader context, that the city has changed around it, and people and the way that people use public spaces have kind of changed as well. So we've come up with a set of principles. Well, first, we really looked at what was happening in City Place and the way that people are currently using it. And probably, no surprise to anybody here, many of whom I've actually seen in the plaza, but most everybody is in the plaza, right? That when you do the counts throughout the day and into the night, what we see is that most of the activity actually sits within that plaza. Not as much activity actually finds its way down the streets that move away from the plaza, all right? And so, that's kind of challenging then for the retail, not just in the plaza but outside of the plaza. And so, we had to kind of think about why that was happening. You know, four to five people spend time in City Place. The other thing we know is in the broader context of the city of West Palm Beach, that plaza is one of the most popular places to hang out, okay? So it's an interesting question then, why, if it's such a popular place then, is the retail still not quite working? And so, could we look at some design solutions that might actually help provide a better connection between the people that are using the plaza and then the success and vitality of the retail? You know, we see really two places in the city where this popularity happens, right? Clematis and then Rosemary at City Place. It really comes alive at night. I've spent many evenings there. Programming is key. A third of activities on the main plaza are really activated by that cultural programming. So I think we'll want to create a space that is better at providing that kind of programming. For us, you know, this is a graph that shows the activity in City Place. And, you know, for us, this speaks for itself. Plaza, lots of people. Rest of City Place, not a lot of people. So how do we get people to come to the plaza but also explore outside of the plaza and beyond into the district of downtown? We see that there are some underperforming ground floors that has a lot to do, we think, with visibility and the way that the arcade works. It's very disconnected right now from the city around it. You know, the lighting condition at the edges makes it challenging for people to, pedestrians, to walk in to City Place from around the district, which is important also for all of downtown to improve that connectivity. Because if City Place is doing well and the rest of downtown is doing well, that's good for everybody. This is Okeechobee. I mean, the number of people have watched stand at the edge of Okeechobee with this sort of like dumbfounded look. Have I really been here for seven minutes waiting to cross the street? And the answer is usually yes. So we need to think about making better connections at these edges.
You know, I was in DC last week.
Yeah.
And even like the two-lane streets have 35, 40 seconds to cross. Some other streets are up to 60 seconds. And I'm like, we have 17. You got to cross Okeechobee.
Yeah, and that gets you to the median.
Yeah, that doesn't get you all the way across.
We did a workshop with some people from the Community Foundation last week, and it hadn't rained here for a really long time. And we got to the median, and then like a biblical storm happened on us, and we had to wait in the biblical storm. So it was a good case in point, but we were, it was like, come on, change, please, signal change. So the broader vision, I think, for the work is to, you know, City Place 1.0 version was really, again, a best-in-class case study of a lifestyle center, right, where we do mixed use, we do retail. But I think that the time is now to think more bigger about City Place and how it can pivot from the lifestyle, the lifestyle center that it is now to really a strong participant in a rich and vibrant urban district for downtown. And so, our approach to that is really about that broader strategy. So, you know, we want City Place to be locally authentic, to celebrate that urban life, to provide a constant sense of discovery, but make people comfortable with that discovery, right? A surprising and ever-evolving range of experiences from the unique to the everyday. So some principles that came through are, we need City Place to be visible. We need it to feel a little bit different than it does right now. And so, there are ways we can think about that, right? We need to make sure that all of the retail actually is visible, that you can see in and out. This is like a very core, basic principle of success here. Comfortable. Lots of places like this talk about being comfortable. City Place 2.0 is going to be, is going to use comfort as a primary driver of the design of the public realm, not an afterthought. Imagable. We need it to be Instagram-worthy, right? Like lots of other places in downtown West Palm Beach, a sign of success would be people having experiences there and sharing those experiences because they're important to them. Authentic and fresh. And so, the challenge with any place like in South Florida and that are not particularly old places is when you try and make authenticity through just architecture alone, that can be troublesome, that can be problematic. And so, how can we leverage the thing that is the most authentic about South Florida, which is the flora, the incredible lush growth that can happen here, right, physically, and use that to provide authenticity but also to make this place feel really fresh and new again? And so, we've had this idea that we're calling radical lush, where we actually really double down on the sort of lush green that can happen. And it happens in the neighborhoods in and around West Palm Beach, right? And use that as a way to make this place feel really wonderful and to provide a new kind of experience for people. And then this might be one of the most important things, right? Make public spaces that are adaptable and flexible so that you can create that creative venue for folks to have really new and unique experiences. And then experimental, which I talked about before. So I'm going to take us through quickly the main plaza and then get to Rosemary. You know, this is the existing main plaza. There's a whole bunch of analysis that I've cut out, thankfully, of this presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, nodding heads, good. It's a beautiful plaza. It's not quite flexible and adaptable enough, and it's not quite working well enough for the retail. So one of, so this is our new concept for the plaza. The premise is centered around a couple of things, that you have a large and flexible, adaptable space at the center that can be used for a variety of things. Also, to identify zones within the plaza that have more shading and that are clearly marked and demarked for seating and for people to sit and enjoy one another, and for those zones to be very responsive to the retail that's fronting it, right? So if you have food and beverage, then that's where you would want to invite more people to stay longer. If you have a dress shop, that might be a place where you want people to come directly in, and we wouldn't want to put something in front of it, right? But at its core, it's all about providing that comfort, that flexibility, and that adaptability. Other components. So I mentioned the overhead, the shading elements. Shading is going to be really important. And so, what we want to provide is this idea of having lush and green above your head so there, you'll see some elements of trellises and things that start to extend out and provide that lush and green above your head, but then also lush and green below your feet. So we want to provide lush and green experiences but not block the entryways to the retail. The other one is that, you know, that fountain is lovely. That's there now. The sound is incredible. Every time we turn around, we would see a kid trying to jump into the fountain. Like almost every time there's a kid there, they're trying to get into the fountain, which makes total sense.
I think a few adults have tried to jump in as well.
Yes, I'm sure. Yeah. I won't point any fingers. I swear I didn't see any, no. So the idea that water is, the idea of having water is really important. The, also the thing is, is that we noticed that there are kids there, but the activity of play is really low because there isn't much of an offer for children to play, which is important for kids to have, to bring families. And so, the idea here is to do what we're calling Splash The Plaza, which is to remove the fountain but create an interactive splash pad that could be designed by somebody like Yippee Hine, who's a world-class artist who thinks about creating play and creating spaces and interactivity on the plaza. So we think that would be a really, that's a really sort of a no-brainer thing to do in our opinion, to bring water into the project but to make it more interactive. The other one is the green beach. There's not a place right now within the project where you can actually sit and be on green and relax, right? And so, what a wonderful thing to offer people. The plaza is actually quite large. There's plenty of room for these kinds of amenities. And so, just to show some examples of the kind of look and feel about how that might work. The other one is that that center space here is big enough to be flexible and provide enough room for an event, right? Or like this, or it could be a market space like this. We really want to be able to try a bunch of different things. You'll notice that the permanent stage has been removed. And we think that's really important, that you can have a stage that can be moved around, can be made for large events, but can also be divided into smaller events as well and really have a much broader range of opportunity to use that public space. We want to make sure that when we're on the plaza, we're also able to provide shading where people are going to be. And so, the idea of using these sort of temporary shade sale elements, when you're doing the market, for example, will be critically important. So this is it before. This is sort of a quick render. You can see these trellises that I talked about before that start to extend out and bring that green and lush over your head and provide shade where people need to sit. The splash pad is there. More creative uses of seating along the plaza. The next piece is Palm Court. This is where the Starbucks is, right? This is actually a quite popular part of the court, but it doesn't feel like it's being used to its fullest potential right now. And so, one of the ways that we've been thinking about Palm Court is that the market hall experience, the food hall experience is actually becoming incredibly popular for people all over, all over the world, actually. There aren't many of them that exist in a wonderful outdoor space. And the Palm, the Palm Court area of this project is uniquely proportioned to be a really wonderful space. And so, the idea for this is to actually kind of double down on that idea and start to think about how the retailing could be more like a food hall, where you have many different kinds of food experiences for people. The great thing about that is it can range from like, I can get something for not very much money, but I can also have like a very nice meal with my family if I want. And then these platforms, which are really designed to say, you know, I'm going to go get the greatest noodle in the world, or I'm going to go get the greatest donut, you go get something over there, and we're going to come together and create our own experience on these platforms. So these are just some examples from around the world. And so, if you think about this before, and then the after can be that really lush experience, right, with these wonderful platforms and, you know, a lot more seating for folks to enjoy that experience. If you think about, you know, nighttime would be a completely delicious experience in this place once we move forward with this. So that takes us to Rosemary Avenue. I wanted to talk about the plaza because it sort of represents the design DNA of the project, and you'll see.
Yep. I just wanted, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Sure.
I just wanted to explain because we do have new commissioners. The city has been working with GALL Studios, with Matthew, for a little while now. And what cool thing happened is that City Place hired them as well. So now, the work that Matthew's doing in City Place and the work that they're doing here in the city makes sense to each other and are tied in. So I just wanted to be clear about why there was the discussion of City Place and then how it will then get tied in with what we're doing as well.
Great. So Rosemary Avenue, of course, is critically important. What's exciting to us about this part of the project is that this stretch of Rosemary represents a real opportunity to be very innovative in the way that we prioritize people in the public realm and to do it in a way that not only offers a new paradigm perhaps for parts of West Palm Beach, but to improve the way that City Place is working right now. And so, we, the arcades, right? The arcades are wonderful, and they make total sense in a place like West Palm Beach, where the sun is so intense, there's lots of heavy rain. There are some challenges with the arcades, though, when you step out of them. And what you see is that there's a confusion that happens with the arcade. A true arcaded street is one where you can move back and forth between each side of the arcade very easily. And that back and forth allows you to see into the retail, right, across the street. Because there's parking along the side and we've got, you know, a lot of stuff here on the outside edge of the arcade, what actually starts to happen is that the arcade feels like a corridor instead of part of an integrated street experience. And so, we were saying, look, let's try and make the arcade really work well, because it is a wonderful thing to have in this environment. And so, one of the ways that we think can do that is to actually move from a curbed street where you get that confusion of the car stacking up against the arcade and move to a curbless street, where you actually can increase that translation across the, from one side of the street to the other. It also provides a tremendous amount of flexibility going forward. And so, you'll see that, you know, under the first iteration, right, we've got this like walk zone, and then sort of a questionable zone, and then a parking zone, and then a driving zone. If we go curbless, we can open that up to create opportunities for people to walk, to be sure, to move back and forth across the street, to be sure, but also even places where we can activate the street edge a little bit more clearly by even offering places to sit and stay. For example, where the restaurants might be. And so, a new street section could look like this, where you've got basically 22 feet down the middle, which offers room for the driving lanes but also the gutter, and then these, these large transition zones. That trellis that I talked about before starts to express itself on the street and starts to indicate to people as they're coming down the street, walking or driving, that there are places here that are for people, really for people now. And it also opened, go ahead.
Did you ever consider making the driving space smaller?
So the driving.
You got 11-foot lanes there?
So the driving lane in this case is actually, this includes the gutter, right? So the lane would be nine-foot lane plus a two-foot gutter.
Okay.
So it's actually, it's actually quite narrow, which we think will also slow traffic down. There's going to be a lot of visual friction along the street now. But a really kind of remarkable transformation, I think, of Rosemary. And so, just to, this just shows the plan of how that works. I don't need to get into too much detail on this, but just to say that the paving pattern actually will also reflect an arrival at the plaza. You see the lanes actually switch to the paving pattern of the plaza here, so that the idea of the plaza, the square, becomes a bit bigger now than it is currently, right? So that the hemmel takes a much more prominent place within the, within the center of this larger square idea. You can see, you know, the same, the dotted line indicates this trellis, right? And so, you can see that DNA that I talked about before of the trellis on the plaza turning the corner and now starting to express itself again as you move down Rosemary Avenue. These are kind of boring drawings. The most exciting thing, I think, is, I'll come back to this, is how this transforms the street, right? So you have an existing street like this, again, beautiful architecture, to be sure, but it could be so much better, we think, right? Where you actually start to have something that embraces the pedestrian experience through the greening and lush. We actually get a real transformation and a freshening of this place without having to do a huge amount of change to the buildings themselves, which we think is really important. So this design project actually extends right now, this, this concept and schematic design goes from Okeechobee down to Avirnia. As I understand it right now and related can answer some of these questions, the first phase of the project, however, will be basically on the right-of-way from Okeechobee to Hibiscus and then upgrades and updates also to Hibiscus, right, as shown on this diagram. So I will stop now. I don't know how long I went, but, and we could take some questions.
Well, before you sit down.
Sure.
What questions do we have for Matthew? Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you. It's beautiful. I love the sails that extend out. Could you bring that picture back up?
Yeah, sure, the street one.
I just think there's so many opportunities to use that.
This one?
Earlier on, you did it, but it's.
Oh, the shade sale, yeah.
Yeah, the shade sales. They're amazing, and the design that you can put out there, yeah.
These, yeah. These are wonderful.
Especially given the heat and the rain.
That's cool.
The other, I have a question.
Sure.
And that is the curbless streets. And I think they're, they're great, and I've seen examples of things that we're going to do to try to prevent traffic from coming up. And we have them here. But here's my big question, because people drive over them all the time. They run into them. You walk down the street, you see them completely either bowled over or knocked over or chipped off. What can we do? Because then you're going to constantly repair them. I mean, how.
Talking about that gets run over. Like bollards.
The bollards that block the curb. So the question really comes down to materials and what you can put up there, because then you go through this period of time of trying to fix them. And then they look really awful for however long that goes on, and then you get them fixed, and then there's something else.
Yeah.
So what, what can we put up there that helps protect the pedestrian but doesn't continue, have to be a continual maintenance item?
And part of it is key to it is slowing those cars down, you know, which the narrower lanes and the open access is going to help to do. But go ahead, Matthew, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because, I mean, just to, where I see them happening is at night, when nobody's around, you know?
Yeah.
People are like driving down.
That's true.
The Clematis Street at whatever.
Yeah. I mean, I think, do you want me to go on this, or do, how should we?
We can, you can go on.
Okay. So, I mean, I think the, it's an incredibly good point and an important one, not just for maintenance, but also just for making people feel comfortable and safe, I think, in these spaces. You know, I think there are a variety of bollard types that can help us navigate that. There's a few things. I think we can protect using bollards in the right places strategically. I think the night thing might be solved by considering lighted bollards, right? Where you actually have a little bit of light that comes out of the bollard itself, so there's a little more visual as you're coming down in the evening. The other thing is to use not just bollards but other elements that help people know like, this is not the driving lane, right? And we can use green for that. We've also, we're also looking at benches, things that are a little bit more fortified but are part of the urban street furniture palette. Places that are doing this well don't use one strategy. I think they use multiple strategies kind of throughout the project. All this stuff is going to slow people down, but I agree with you, we need to be really thoughtful about those details.
If I may.
Yeah, sure.
If I may. Typically, a bollard designs to absorb the energy and then tip it over. In a shared street design such as this, we're designing for approximately between 5 to 10 miles per hour. So the energy that's hitting each bollard is actually minimal. So exactly what Matthew was talking about, there's many, safety is our concern, and we will, we're working through material selections right now to see which is the best combination. But as Matthew talked about, bench or bollards, those are all strategies that could essentially deter, you know, as for enhancing safety along the corridor. But our target speed design in a street like this is between 5 to 10 miles per hour.
Okay. Wen, you have more to add to this, or?
Yes. I do not have more to add to this.
No, I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to stay within the time.
Right.
Other questions? Anything else, yeah, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. This is a great presentation. Is the ultimate goal to eliminate driving on this road?
No. I don't, I don't think that's the ultimate goal. The ultimate goal is to create a space where pedestrian, bicyclists, and vehicular movements can coexist. Therefore, driving lanes are still preferred. It's, we have to look at spaces that, you know, which mode is most vulnerable in a space like this where pedestrian organically exists. We want to make sure that we design our streets in a way that's safe for our pedestrians. So there's no intention to eliminate cars on this road.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I just see the one car parked there on the bottom left. So is there still parking?
There will be still parking. I mean, the future of mobility, as we know, with technology and AVs, is that, you know, spaces, which, what my understanding is, that spaces are most valuable for people and not so much as cars. We will look at preserving some, for example, for curbside drop ops. Curbside management is very important for us at this location. So therefore, there will be parking spaces preserved along the corridor.
As you recall, at maybe two CRO meetings ago, we allocated money for the street tattoo to go all the way through City Place and up to 11th Street. So this is all about tying in the City Place and downtown and the northwest and tying them all together and making City Place really a part of the neighborhood. One of the things Matthew said in the beginning that I hadn't really thought about, but, you know, City Place is very inward-facing. And, and at the time it was built was, you know, state of the art and really amazing. But now, it's really going to be more a part of our overall downtown with lots of wonderful places to stop and eat and visit and sit and enjoy. Commissioner James.
Thank you. Two questions. One is, when do we move from concept to implementation? And then the second is, refresh my memory, how far north is this going on Rosemary to Fern, I think I heard?
Yeah, so I, I might turn to you guys for the, for the schedule question.
You have to, you can stay here and talk into this if you want.
Jordan Raple, Related Companies. We're still working with the engineering department and our design team on a full implementation, but as Matthew pointed out, the goal is to phase this over the next couple of years so it's not, so we limit disruption as much as possible, realizing this is a main thoroughfare throughout the city. So we're pushing forward on the design but working closely with the city in terms of an implementation plan.
How far north?
Thank you, Jordan. Jordan, you want to talk about how far north you're going to go?
Yeah, I can, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think the idea is that the first phase goes to Hibiscus. The design is going all the way through up to Ivernia right now. And as far as the phasing of up to Ivernia, I think, again, we'd have to hear a little bit more from Related. But this is why I think, you know, the street tattoo and those ideas are really interesting right now, because, you know, the revitalization and work on a corridor that goes from the convention center all the way and beyond the sunset is complex, right? And they're, these are very different places and neighborhoods, but, but bringing a lot